Good evening. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this summer and for all the wonderful things that come with that in this beautiful Lakes country. We thank you again for this wonderful city in which to live, and we continue to seek you and your provision for all the people of Fergus Falls. We pray that you would take care of all the needs of all the citizens here, and I pray especially tonight for the council as they meet, I pray that you would give them both wisdom and a spirit of unity and peace as the proceedings go on tonight. Where we ultimately entrust ourselves in this city to you and trust that you have good plans for us. So thank you for how you lead. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, July 15, 2019, and I'll call this meeting of Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Hey, Fergus, I've seen one of you.
Here.
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 Yep.
Here.
We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I'll call on City Administrator Andrew Bremzough. Good evening, Andrew.
Yeah, good evening, Your Honor members. Thank you. We do have a couple additions this evening, and they're both related to the same item. One would be likely under consent or under ordinances and resolutions, and that would be a motion directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance changing the road name of Amy Court to Anna Court. And then corresponding to that, under ordinances and resolutions, there should be a first reading of ordinance changing that, those street names from Amy Court to Anna Court, if the council wishes to proceed. There is documentation on your desk this evening for that.
All right. Is that the only addition?
Yes.
With that, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda? I'll make that motion, Your Honor. Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign that motion carries. There are no public hearings or bids to award this evening. There are also no petitions and communications. So we will move to the consent agenda, and there are five items under the consent agenda. There's a copy in your packet. Let's also put a copy on the board for us if there's anyone who would like to discuss any of those items individually. We will remove them. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Brent.
I'll second it.
Caroline. Roll call, please.
Um, yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight we have a second reading of ordinance 88, which is a rezoning of the Kirkbright addition from RA to B3. This has been to the committee and to the council. It's had its first reading. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our city attorney. And seeing none, I will ask for a roll call, please.
For me.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Second resolution this evening is providing for the issuance and sale of $3.32 million in general obligation bonds, Series 2019, pledging the security thereof in net revenues, special assessments, and levying a tax in the payment. I'll call on our city finance director, Bill Sonmore. Looks like Doug Green just joined us just in time.
How was that? Perfect timing.
Kind of had to fist.
I'll start with a little intro, let him get his grounding here. That's why I walked out there, I was just looking for him, so to make sure we're all...
You kind of drew that out a little, but I just read that.
Nope, you're good. Doug, and they do have that, the bid tab on their desk. I made copies, so they all got that ahead. So just to remind you, the project we're looking at, this is the Mount Faith improve street and infrastructure improvements, as well as water reservoir rehab out there. So we're doing the water sewer storm and then the street replacement over by the school district. We needed to bond for a portion of that, and that's what we're issuing the bonds for. The uses of the funds for the the street portion is $1,029,648. Water portion for that reconstruction area, $934,357. The water reservoir that we're going to look at rehabbing, reservoir number two, because number one needs to be decommissioned for $700,000, and then the stormwater portion for $703,910. So those are the uses. That's why we needed to put a financing package together. We aren't bonding for any of the sewer portion. We're paying cash for that portion of the project. So with that, if Doug is ready to talk to you a little bit, we had the sale for the bonds today, so that's what he'll tell you how that went, and the recommendation, the resolution is on your desks as well.
Thank you, Bill. Good evening, Doug.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. May I approach the council again? Doug Green with Baker Tilly, formerly Springstead. Still not accustomed to saying that yet, but as Bill mentioned, it is probably not yellow on your, it's a bid tabulation, so this morning, I believe at 10:00 a.m., we took bids on behalf of the city, had a very good sale, hit the market at a pretty good time. As you know, interest rates have really fallen over the past two months or so. They came back last week off their lows, but I guess you can't always hit the low. And so the winner was Northland Security. You see that there's three names there. They go together in groups called syndicates, just to, just to share the risk a little bit. If they're not, if the lead underwriter's not able to sell them, then they're partners in this transaction. Other banks will do so. So we award the bonds based off of a true interest rate, which is kind of the weighted average present value, I guess is the best way to explain it. And that came in at 2.235. That, that interest rate also includes the fee that they, they charge for buying the bonds and reselling them, so they do have an incentive to keep that fee down in, in their bids, because it affects that, that interest rate. I believe when, a month ago, when we authorized the bond sale, or when we set the date and time of the sale, we were looking at an interest rate of 2 point, uh, let's see, I believe it was around 2.55 or so. So it's about 30 basis points or .3% lower than what we were estimating about a month ago. Like I said, you know, rates, rates have come down. One last thing I'll mention about it, I know there's a lot of numbers on here, but you can see how close they were, they won by, you know, just one hundredth of a percent, one one hundredth, or one basis point. And the only difference all the way from top to bottom was, you know, just 12 basis points, or just .12%. So that's what we've seen throughout. Everyone knows where the market is. So we've had some really tight, tight bidding over the past few weeks. Bill already went through the projects. Over the next month, we will be, you know, just getting, collecting a bunch of signatures, and I believe in mid-August, the bond proceeds will be transferred to the, to the city. With each bond issuance, it does require a credit rating. It's not legally obligated to have a credit rating, but the only way to make these bonds really marketable and get the lowest interest rate is to have a credit rating attached with each individual bond issuance. And we did go through the bond issuance. Again, the city's general obligation credit rating was affirmed, reaffirmed at AA3, which is a great credit, investment grade credit rating. Again, for those of you unfamiliar with it, it starts at AAA, and then you have the AA levels. So anytime, you know, you're in that AA level, it's high investment grade, and it has the general obligation, the city, they're going to, you know, just be very marketable. Looking at the credit opinion, you know, they mentioned the credit strengths, as you know, you're the regional center, you're the regional business center with the community college, in the tech college campus, and, you know, it's primarily, you're taking care of the things that you can control when it comes to a credit rating, stable financial operations, and your, your reserves and liquidity. You know, look at, you know, what you budget each year, and the fact that, you know, it comes in very close to budget. So, and that's not always the case with, with all that you are. So those are the financial strength. The challenges are those things that you, you know, you really can't, really can't control. It's in a, you know, in greater Minnesota, so the, the incomes and the wealth levels aren't, naturally aren't as high as the metro area, and so frankly, we're competing against them. And so those are some of the, you know, challenges when being compared to other cities in terms of credit rating. But, you know, again, the difference in if we were just one notch higher in an upgrade in terms of credit rating, it'd only be, you know, anywhere between five and 10 basis points, you know, .05 to .1% lower credit rating. So, you know, the market movements matter a whole lot more really than, you know, the credit rating does for, in terms of interest rates. So with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Doug. I just had one, just looking at the, the sheet here, the num, the one number jumps out in 2025, why does it go up? The maturity there and the reoffering yield? I don't even know what that means.
Okay.
Obviously, something changes there, and...
Right. So you're, are you looking at...
It goes from 1.35.
Uh, that, that has, that's has to be an error. That's the reoffering yield.
It'd be 1.52.
Yeah, so in 2025, it's 1.52.
Got it.
So what, we don't have to get into this bond math. This coupon and yield, it's simply a matter of, you know, if we're charging 100 bucks for these bonds, and we said we needed that, they're going to pay us $103, but for, in exchange for slightly higher interest rates.
Sure.
And so they're going to, we're going to take that additional money, put it in the project fund, and reduce the amount that we need to borrow. In exchange for that, you know, we're going to pay these coupons, 5% coupons, you know, through 28, then 3%. If you compare, you know, what we offered at that, at that higher amount, at these lower reoffering yields, and compared it to what we're actually borrowing for, because they paid us a premium at these higher coupons, it's essentially the same.
Sure. Thanks, Doug. Any other questions?
And it is correct in Exhibit A of your resolution, so it was just on this separate one, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks. Any, any other questions for Doug or Bill? If not, is there a resolution? Someone offer that resolution?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Tom.
I'll second that.
Caroline? Any further discussion? It should be somebody that lived on Mount Faith, really.
It's going to be a lock job.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thanks, Doug. Item number three is a resolution approving the capital improvement plan, and I will call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, Your Honor and members of the council. Yes, before you is the 2020, 2024, excuse me, capital improvement plan. This has been circulated and went through the process as prior years. Last week, the planning commission had reviewed this. They made a few comments and everything we can discuss and everything, but at this time, before you, is what we're requesting is adoption of the 2020, 20 through 2024 capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions of the council?
Your Honor, I noted in the planning commission's kind of, obviously, their, their sort of prior approval of this was, they wanted the council to take a look at projects, you know, particularly the aquatic center, the RTC demolition, street repairs, community center in Lake Alice, and, and I don't know how, how much of this obviously is absolutely set in stone when we approve it, but, you know, we had obviously under, under parks, you know, there's $2.9 million for kind of parks, but then when you add up, you know, the, the streets and solid waste, and I think it was the sanitary sewer, you know, it's only 2.2 million, and our streets are in pretty rough shape, and so spending kind of 2.9 million on parks and park areas versus spending 2.2 million on streets, sewer, and, and water sidewalks, I think we need to kind of look at that and maybe readdress it.
Yep. Your Honor, if I may, you're, you're absolutely right, council member X. This plan, through its inception and everything, and how it's been processed in years prior, it's never been a fully funded program.
Yeah.
If you also look at, too, on the bottom of each department and everything, I consider it's called leveling the resources based on your budgetary needs. This list is a combination of more so wants than needs. Operational aspects from each department are not included in this, but that has been how the process has. This year, we, among staff, this didn't happen, I like to say it clear, it didn't happen in a silo. This was done with the public comment period, with staff. We, for the most, we've put a lot more effort into it, and we basically trimmed down a lot of unnecessary things in this plan that have been on there for years, or we've considered them, they were already operational needs, therefore, why are they on here? So it was a good audit moving forward. We look to even do more, and it would be in everybody's best interest, especially staff, if we had a funded working capital improvement plan, and that's why we're going to try to tighten this up even more.
Thank you.
Jim, isn't, this is more or less a roadmap, my understanding, and what you have on top could drop down to number three or four, and something else move up. It's, it's a roadmap of what we would like to see done, and it doesn't always get done. And it, it, I mean, you got to have a roadmap to know where you're going. Sometimes you have to take a detour and move something else up.
You're absolutely, Your Honor. Councilmember Fish, you're absolutely right. Your years on this committee, you've seen how the process is, and yes, until a project, if it is, it's a roadmap, it's a reminder of the wants and needs that we do have throughout the community, but none of these projects, the majority, I don't want to speak to all them, if a project is to move up in the hierarchy, we'd start initiating the project and identifying the exact funding sources, and how would we proceed with these projects?
Thank you, Brian. Bill, did you also have a response?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, piggybacking onto what you both have said, it's always been a planning document, sometimes very much a placeholder on some types of projects. Unlike Brian said, we want to try even bring that, dial it in more in the future years to come, so that it becomes more deliberately tied to the budget. And then when we think about the budget, the one thing that's not in here, and we'll give you some piece, and you can share with your constituents, is this doesn't include the annual dollars that we do for overlays and seal coats, so that's not in here, that's in addition. So anything that happens out of our operating budgets is not in this. This is more the capital related things, but if we mill an overlay or seal coat, that's all operational, so that's in addition to what's here. So it kind of makes streets look a little better, then.
Sure.
I want to mention, sorry, I just, to Councilmember Fish's point, this isn't set in stone, and anything that's on this list will take additional council action to, like Brian mentioned, initiate or move forward with. So by blessing this plan, and I know that was a concern of the planning commission, some of them had personal distaste for some of the projects included in here, and you're not blessing the project, so to speak, you're blessing this document as a tool, and you have the opportunity to say yes or no to these projects in the future going forward. So these things are going to change, they change every year, things become priorities, there's elections that take place, there's shifts in priority, and I think we have to keep that in mind as we're looking at this, but also just know you're exactly right. It's, it takes additional action of the council, and all these things will be discussed. So you're not blessing or, or necessarily saying that you're giving us the ability to proceed with all these projects if they're in a given year on this plan.
Thanks, Andrew. Caroline?
So there's talk about priority, but under the priority column, there's no clear priorities. Is there a way to read what the clear priorities are, or is that something that's a roadmap that we can kind of figure out, or why is that column there?
You're absolutely right. That's a, that's a product of component classification of the program. It's called the planet software that we've had, and I'm not sure how long it's been implemented. But yeah, you're absolutely right. I, we've actually discussed that, too, but it's not a function that we've fully implemented yet, along with the working capital program.
Okay.
We're hoping to make it a better.
Good.
Yeah, Your Honor, let me add to that, too, if you don't mind. I envision that this whole process looks completely different next year, and we've, like Brian mentioned, staff, we spent more time on it this year than we have for several years, and we identified as a group that, or as a team, that this needs to change, but we didn't frankly have the time to change it, to engage the appropriate stakeholders and do more with this that we want to do. And so next year, it's going to look completely different, and frankly, that priority should be filled in, and, and departments should have to prioritize and come to the council with what they see as the biggest need for the community and, and ask for those dollars. And so, you know, it's not a good answer for tonight, because frankly, this process isn't great, and I think we'd all admit that, but we are committed and resounded to the fact that next year is going to be a new process, and unfortunately, we didn't have time to roll that out this year. But we did spend at least a couple hours as a, as a whole department head group, walking through this line by line, and significantly shrunk this list from, from previous lists. We removed projects that have been on there for 15 to 20 years, and so we've given it a better look than we have, but, but my commitment to you all is that next year, this will look different, and the process is going to work differently, and it's going to be a lot more user friendly, and, and frankly, it's going to be budget friendly, and it's going to be a better document to serve as a roadmap, like Councilmember Fish mentioned. But in full transparency, this process isn't great.
I would offer the resolution that will adopt the 20 to 24 CIP plan.
Is there a second to that resolution? Thank you, Caroline. Further discussion? Scott?
Yeah, thanks, Ben. I'm going to speak against the resolution, and I intend to vote against, vote for it. Basically, this is going to become part of our public record, is whether it's going to be different next year or not, this becomes a part of the record of what we intend to do this year, and I don't think it very accurately reflects the priorities that we've identified. And the things that the planning commission identified, I think, were very valid. The fact that there was no project identified for 2021 for streets at all, the fact that Lake Alice had no funding for four years for any project of any kind, when that was one of our top priorities identified at our retreat earlier this spring. The, there were other things that they also mentioned that I think were valid concerns. I don't know that it would take a great deal amount of time to at least put those kind of placeholder things in place to reflect those questions and those priorities, and come back with another version of this at our next meeting. The question that I guess I would have, even though I still intend to vote against this resolution, would be, to what degree does it matter whether we pass it or not? It's going to, is it going to completely bring a halt to the budgeting process, or does it blow up everything, or does it not matter what, does it not matter? I mean, if it doesn't matter, then maybe we just ignore it and move on, but at this point, that's how I'd like to comment.
Thanks, Scott. Andrew, or Brian, did you guys have any?
Or maybe Bill can speak to the budget question.
Yeah, I have the budget question, sorry.
It, of course, won't blow up the budget process, because we have to continue with the budget process, and when we use this document in the past, we'll often sit down, and we know all the projects we're working on with you that you've initiated, you know, for example, Mount Faith that we're working on, and the library when we did that. So we make sure we get those in there. Some of the others, we do put in general categories like streets, this, on a more generic basis, but we do try to list out what different streets are in here under this plan, but because it's in there, doesn't mean that they're a go, again. But it's not a perfect process, but it's not going to halt the budget process either, because we certainly have to get next year's budget put together.
And I would add, Your Honor, there would be no way to, to your original point about not maybe reflecting the council's priorities, there would be no way to put all of the priorities of the city, or the city council, in the 2019 column. I mean, it's just not, in no scenario would this community be able to afford all of the projects, and so as the top priority of the city, which was the downtown riverfront project, you'll see that reflected in 2019 as $2.25 million, also in, or excuse me, 2020, and also in 2021, being significant projects, which is why the park budget looks fairly inflated over those two years as well. We have to do a little bit of a guesstimate balancing act as to when these things could come together, knowing that the council has dozens of priorities, and I think this does a good job of reflecting some of those conversations that were had with the city council. I understand that Lake Alice in particular is not on here, and some of the things that go into consideration with that are related to the permits that we need from the DNR that were previously denied, which are going to continue to take time and may or may not be a short-term thing. We look at, or Brian looks at various reconstruction projects in relation to that project as well, and it may not be the prime candidate for a reconstruction of utilities and streets as a standalone project without addressing some of the water quality needs. And so there's not a real exact science, and there's no way to truly capture, I think, all nine of your guys' priorities in any given order a year, and I think we have to keep that in mind as, as we talk about a diversity of stakeholders and a diversity of, of priorities amongst the city council. And all of the projects, I believe, that the city council has talked about are on here in some way, shape, or form, and I think that's a good start. For example, Community Center was another top three priority of the city council from the retreat, and we just know that there's no way that could come together in the next couple of years, so you'll see it on the, on the tail end of this capital improvement plan, but certainly reflected to keep it on the radar and on the roadmap, so to speak, so people have some thoughts into that, and frankly, that might come off after some further discussion amongst the council and some other groups. So there's no perfect science here. I think Brian did a good job of doing what he could to reflect those priorities. I think this list is fairly comprehensive, the dairy properties on there. I know there was some debate about the year that would take place, but again, just knowing our financial picture and how much money is required to do all of these desired projects, we have to start using some level of judgment to start saying when they could realistically happen, and the decision lies in the council's hands as to how that ultimately plays out. But we had to bring something that actually could be close to reality to your consideration. So that's how I would respond to that, but I appreciate those comments.
Thanks, Andrew. Are there any other questions before we vote?
If I could just make one suggestion, I guess. For example, on the water system, there's $500,000 a year just across the line. Even something like that, through the street department, would have taken that concern away to a large degree, I think, for a lot of people, because you know you're going to do something.
Sure.
You know, and I think that type of approach would have helped make this a better document.
Thanks, Scott. Any other comments, questions before we vote? Brian, did you have?
I just want to address just a few things, and I'm just looking what you're referring to, Councilmember Quomby, if I may. That's, yeah, for the $500,000, are you referring to the water plant rehabilitation?
Correct.
Yeah, with that's, those are a significant need that we haven't, and we're working on that, and that's if we worked on our rate study to help look at our rates and everything. That's a significant need that we're looking at in the future, and we earmarked like $500,000. We haven't confirmed the study yet, but we're looking to get that completed, hopefully this fall here, to do the assessment. In regards to the street, I would like to say, I think that message is quite clear to staff and everything, especially with this council's taken upon. With the recent projects we've done with College Way, we just recently had the pre-construction meeting, and I do have the minutes, but last Thursday for our Lincoln Avenue Federal Aid Project Mill Overlay, that's a significant project. I'm waiting for the official minutes, but based on what the contractor's looking at, they are looking to actually start the road surfacing sometime in August. So yes, we have a lot of litany. I like to also remind, in this past year, we completed the annual pavement survey. That's a project that's been on the boards for quite some time. We're looking to start doing some more implementation heavy into 2021, along as the potential of looking at fees. So I think a lot of the groundwork is kind of in place to have a much more robust pavement management system coming out, more improvement.
Thank you, Brian. Roll, roll call, please.
Tony?
No.
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Thank you, Brian. Item number four... Item number four under ordinance resolutions is a resolution authorizing the submission of a Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission Fiscal Year 2021 Funding Application for the Glacial Edge Trail from Union Avenue to Otter Tail County Historical Society. Andrew, did you want to start the discussion on this?
Yes, your honor, members, thank you. We had a good discussion about this at the Committee of the Hall meeting last week, and you asked for us to bring it forward with some additional information related to some of the projects that have been successfully funded, and Ryan Miller has done that research and has an answer for you, but as we were doing that research and as we were doing more work on refining a budget related to this Glacial Edge Trail application, we decided or think that it probably makes a lot of sense to schedule a work session specifically related to this Glacial Edge Trail funding application. There are some new rules, so to speak, with the application this year, and I think those rules may have implications that the council wants to consider in what their request may be. So what I'm proposing to the city council is that a week from tonight, Monday, the 22nd, at 4:30, we host a work session dedicated to this issue, and at that time, ask the city council to act in the capacity, as a city council, to give this resolution authorizing the submission of the grant, which I think may or may not change, probably will change on what the route could be, or what the significance of the request could be based on some of the factors that we've identified over the last couple of days. So that would be my suggestion. We could certainly have some discussion this evening, but I think it makes sense to have a more global discussion and really take a deep dive on these factors and look at budgets in a setting that is more conducive for that and allows us more time to do that. So I guess I would defer to the council as to what they want to do, but I would recommend that we put a work session together and give this the time and attention that it needs.
Yeah, the only thought, I guess, would be to make sure that we have five members that are able to be present next Monday, so that we have the ability to pass a resolution, right? That's the one.
I'm available.
I'm going to be here, but I don't counsel, never mind.
For a lot of you.
Caroline's checking her.
Yep, I think I can make it.
I'll be there.
You'll be there?
It's three of us.
I'll be there.
Jim, four, five. Any other thought, and assuming that we're going to have, it looks like we'll have five members present, are you guys good to have a deeper dive into it next?
Yeah, I think would be, you brought up a good point, and the Committee of the Hall was like, how many points is it out of, how many did we get last time? And so if we could get that information circulated prior, that would be useful.
Ryan did send out some information today, I don't know if you got it. It says something like, I think you said that most successful applications are close to a 25% match, but that's not the exact point.
That's not, that's, yeah, it was, it's, do you need, is the maximum points, you can get 100 points, and we got 65 last time, or did we get kind of, you know, 85 last time, I think was, that was what I was thinking of.
Yeah, well, your honor, members, Councilmember Hicks, we'll send that out in advance of the meeting, and we'll have a presentation prepared and everything for consideration at the meeting. So we'll send out some materials ahead of time with an agenda, and then we'll be prepared to take a deep dive on that.
Everybody good with that? Wait until next Monday?
Yep.
All right. And we will move on to item number five, which is the authorization of the submission of a National Endowment for the Arts Grant for the Downtown Riverfront Project, and, Ryan Miller, I'm sorry, Ryan. Good evening, Ryan.
Thank you, your honor. Good evening, members of the council. Around this time last year, the council made a resolution to apply for a National Endowment for the Arts Grant, and with that resolution authorizing the required matching funds for that grant. That was for a fiscal year 2019 grant, that would be going towards some of the elements in the Downtown Riverfront projects across the river here. That initial grant last year was unsuccessful, but staff is recommending to apply again this year for fiscal year 2020 for the National Endowment for the Arts Foundation Grant. So the request to NEA would be for $200,000, that would require a dollar-for-dollar match by the locality, so that would be a $200,000 match from the city or matching partners, if matching partners can be identified. Last year, we discussed where the match could come from, and there are other grants we could apply for, such as Lake Region for the Arts, our Lake Region Arts Council grants, I believe. There's also private fundraising that can be done, there's been a lot of that already for that downtown projects. So those all could go towards the match, but the resolution would be committing the city to a dollar-for-dollar match of $200,000 for a $400,000 project. And the projects, they're the same, it's the same application as last year, and the project would include the installation of the interactive water feature in the downtown project plan, as well as some public art installments, whitefinning and zianage throughout the downtown improvement area, and there's also in there some funding for marketing and promotion staffing for the new activities that take place in the amphitheater, in the farmer's market, whatever, is all included in our downtown project. So the recommendation is to adapt a resolution authorizing a fiscal year 2020 application to the National Endowment for the Arts, and authorizing the local match for the grant.
Thank you, Ryan. And of course, we always have the ability to accept that grant once it's, if it is successful. Any questions, the council, for Ryan?
The one question, I brought up a while ago on this, the downtown thing, was in fact a plan on marketing, and I think, I thought somebody was going to put one together, but I mean, I still would like to see a plan on how we intend to market this, you know, we're going to build this, and then are we just going to kind of build it and hope they come, or are we going to have an active, you know, marketing plan? And I thought the committee was going to look at that and push something out, and I think I would still like to see something like that.
Yeah, your honor, members, Councilmember Hicks, that is a great question, and it's still actively being worked on, to be quite honest with you. We've been in contact with the Center for the Arts on multiple occasions, and it's certainly not going to fall on their shoulders, but they're a key partner in programming of the amphitheater, whether they like it or not. And as a result of some of the committee's work wrapping the design of the amphitheater up, those conversations are ongoing. I would say that Bill and I have met with him at least three, if not four, times talking about that, and we've talked to other stakeholders as well. So that conversation's ongoing, there's nothing that's been formally drafted or put together to bring back to the council, but it's something that we will address.
I mean, my concern is that obviously we have like movies in the park and, you know, we have programs that are in place, and I don't want to see something distract from something else, but only to be an additive thing.
Yep, we'll bring something soon as we have it.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, is there someone who would like to offer a resolution for the submission?
I'd like to offer that.
Second, your honor.
Grant application? Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Tom. Other questions for Ryan? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you, Ryan. Item number six is a request to change the name of a street and the name, number of a house. So we received this, I think we all have this letter, it's on the desk, right?
Yep.
From Ed Newman of NCS Homes, and the second request is pretty straightforward, it's to change the name of a house from 2009 to 2007, so they're all in line. The other request is, and there is a resolution that's been drafted, but it's to change the name from Amy Court to Anna Court, and I'm not sure, I just learned this today, I think we all did, and I don't know if there's any more reasoning behind the name of the change, but obviously, my thought process is Amy Court was named for somebody, I'm not sure why we want to just go changing that name, just because there's different owners on the street, but that's my personal thought, unless there's a reason, a compelling reason that we need to change the name of the street, it's named after somebody, so that's my personal thought, but I'm interested to hear what other people think.
In this case, since the owner owns all the lots on the street and he's interested in changing the name, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's a coin flip, Amy or Anna, but I don't have any dog in the fight as far as the name goes, other than to think it would be, it would be an indication of our willingness to work with builders and developers to do something simple like this, and for that reason, I'd support it.
It's not costing us anything, I don't think, is it?
The cost of the.
Science. I guess my only concern would be setting a precedent, you know, that now, that if people decide that they want the street that they live on to be a different name, you know, for instance, I do believe that Fergus used to have a Banana Avenue, and I would love to see that come back, so.
There was kind of a split there.
Well played, sir, well played.
Yeah, I guess that would just be my only concern, is setting a precedent.
Sure. All right, well, is there a resolution?
It would actually be a motion directing me to draft an ordinance that's out, which changes street names by ordinance, and there is an ordinance that's drafted and ready to go for a first reading, so choose, but it would start with a motion directing me to draft it.
If you're looking for that motion, then I'd be willing to present that motion to change the name, that'd be the only item on this motion, and then we deal with the other stuff, right? Yeah, I'd present that motion, to change the name from Amy to Anna.
Hey, so there's a motion?
Actually, your honor, just to clarify, the motion would be to direct the city attorney to draft the ordinance, and then we'll talk about the actual changing of the name.
Very good.
Got it, so there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, Colin.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries, and now the second bit of action would be, talk about the actual, we need to introduce the resolution, correct? And is that, does it, I can't find my copy, does it have the name of the number, house change as well?
That's more of a engineering question, but just to change the street name requires an ordinance, but this house number is an engineering question.
So what is, so the, yeah, thanks. So the question about cost, other than the street sign, we do have a cost of publishing an ordinance of $600, is that correct? No?
Not that much, but something is small.
Small, okay. Do we have any idea what it is?
Likely under $200,000.
Okay, so we'll need this ordinance introduced this evening. That's all we need, right? So someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thanks, Anthony. Okay, so that's introduced, and the second item we can do by resolution, just to direct the city staff to have the, did GIS department change the name of the number of the house?
Yeah, your honor, it's something we'll look at, we have to follow postmaster requirements and everything too, we'll look at it, but I'm sure it was set up in some manner.
Got it.
But I can't without looking.
So you guys will look at that, so we don't have to take any action on that tonight?
I have a question.
That's correct.
Jim, don't we usually number them with even or odds, or are they on different sides of the street, or?
It's a cul-de-sac, so I'm not entirely sure, and I am not a dress coordinator, so we'll look and see what we can do that works with the local postmaster.
Usually, one side is odd, one side's even, is the way it's done.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing that, we will move along. Under presentation of claims, this evening, we have claims in the amount of $2,490,807.79. And if there's any questions, we'll direct the finance director.
I have a question, your honor.
Anthony.
Under Fergus Falls Convention, it says May 2019 Lodging Tax Penalty, I just wonder what's the $326, if Bill knows what the penalty is.
Lodging tax penalty?
Yeah.
That's if one of our providers, one of the hotels paid their lodging tax late to the city, then we charge a penalty.
Right.
So, and then we move those revenues between the general fund and the business of Fergus Falls.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, is there a resolution to?
I'll make it, your honor.
Thank you, Anthony. One second. Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board, committee, or department reports, or reports from staff and administrative offices, there's no old business, unfinished business, or new business that I'm aware of. Miscellaneous announcements, reminder that July 29th, 5:30, here in the city council chambers, will be the rental registration public meeting, hopefully we'll all be able to make that. And then again, next Monday, do we set a time?
4:30.
4:30 here in the council chambers, the Glacial Edge Trail Master Plan Submission, or I'm sorry, the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Submission, we'll go into further discussion about that. Any other announcements, Jim?
The siren out by the golf course was repaired today.
Got it. Yeah, thank you to the fire department, to the police department, to the public works department, all.
Otter Tail Power.
Otter Tail Power, heard nothing but good things, with the exception of the one siren that malfunctioned, but everyone's safe, the system's handled what they were supposed to, and so, thank you to everyone on that. Anything else to come before the council? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Hey, I, I just, I'll be right back. My name's Street.